Good evening. Let's to call our school committee meeting this evening to order on this Wednesday, February 6, 2019. It is 7:00 PM. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Student representatives this evening?
Yep, Natalie is here.
Natalie, come on up.
You can pick any one of those down.
Yeah, I guess so. Just bring the microphone with you wherever you go. There you go. Thank you.
So, we have Winter Carnival coming up, which is our annual school-wide pep rally, which is like kind of a war between the grades, but it's all in good spirit and stuff. If you notice the windows coming in, that's in preparation for that. Students have also begun to work on their lip syncs, which will be presented, performed the day of Winter Carnival. So, a lot of student effort goes into this, and it's a nice way to become camaraderie for the school. February break's also coming up, that's the following week. So, that'll be a nice break for the students. The senior basketball nights are today and tomorrow. The boys' basketball game is tonight, as you might have seen coming in, and then the girls' basketball senior night's gonna be tomorrow. We have entered our third quarter of this year, and, which is crazy, a lot of the juniors, freshmen, and sophomores have begun doing their course recommendations with their teachers to pick their schedules for next year. And, yeah. Do you have any questions?
No, no.
All right.
Did you, you didn't have to pick a schedule this year, first time in a year.
Yeah, it's crazy. Seniors are realizing that.
You've got some bigger decisions.
Not coming back.
Got some big decisions waiting for you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So, at this time, I'd like to open up to our Public Comment and Communications segment. School Committee welcomes public comment on items that are within the scope of our responsibilities, but not necessarily on the agenda tonight. Anyone here for something not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the old business that the committee would like to discuss, the new business not on the agenda. Okay, moving on to Mr. Means's report.
Okay, so the first thing on our agenda was to do a presentation on vaping, and Mr. Vega and Mr. Aruni, and we're gonna come in, I asked them if they wouldn't mind being bumped back because we anticipated bad weather, so they'll come in on March 6th to present that, just to save some time. They do wanna talk about the program and what they've got in place, and get your feedback on what they're doing and so forth. Mr. Romano, maybe you could join me for the next one. The tale of Sutton Douglas football continues to, seems to change an awful lot. So, last time we were here talking to you, we had indicated that Sutton had been approved for a co-op with Millbury, that the Douglas football players who play in the Sutton Douglas co-op were grandfathered in and could play in Millbury. They were waiting to hear back from the MIAA as to their application for co-op with Millbury. That was approved also. So, one would think, there you go. Case closed. However, Monday night Sutton had their school committee meeting, and they voted three to two to not go forward with their co-op with Millbury, looking to maintain their identity as a host school for a Sutton Douglas co-op. However, as you may recall from the last time that we were here, Mr. Romano had indicated to you that he was going to speak with the people in Uxbridge. So, would you like to share with them the information from Uxbridge, please?
Yes. So, Mrs. Oakley and I, the athletic director, we had a great meeting with the principal there, Mike Rubin, and his athletic director, Chris, it's a name I can't remember, but we had a great meeting. They were very excited about the idea of co-opping with us. They have a very strong program. They have, they anticipate they're gonna have about 45 players next year. They do run a JV and varsity program. Last year was their first losing year in probably five years. They went five and six, and they play in a very competitive league, nice facilities. So, we were pretty excited to go in on that deal. And we had worked to make sure that the students who were rostered this year for football would be able to play with Sutton, Millbury, basically grandfathered in. So, and then the Sutton school committee vote came in, so I've already heard from Mike Rubin at Uxbridge saying he would really like our players to play there. And I do still think that this is a benefit to our kids to pursue this. I think it's a really good match, and my worry with Sutton is really just that we could be in the same place a year from now, two years from now. It's kinda been a recurring theme a little bit, and, you know, I know that that program, I think they're anticipating about 22 kids next year. That's really hard to sustain a program. I could be wrong on that number, it could be more, but I've heard numbers as low as that.
He indicated 26, I think is what he said to me most recently. So, we, not to catch you off, I'm sorry Josh, but we also got an email from Superintendent Friend probably 10 days ago, which said, "Go find a place to play, 'cause this is, we're done. We're not gonna, we're not going to sign up for a second, another year of, another two years. It's a two-year commitment, another two years of football co-op," and that it would be in our best interest to go out and explore another opportunity. So, to Josh's point, my sense is that, and I talked with Mr. Friend today, he actually reached out to me, I think that they would like us to stay with them. I am not optimistic that it would be a long-term...
So Sutton would like us to stay with them?
Yes.
I feel like it's kind of like a string-along situation at this point, so...
They did apologize for this being as chaotic as it was. As you know, we were not behind any of this, and we actually found out about it sort of second-hand in the first place. But we also don't want to, you know, walk away from a commitment that some of our students may still want to keep. So, we can, according to the MIAA, we can keep our students who are presently, just like we were gonna do in Millbury, they could go to Millbury if they wanted to, and we could explore another co-op because we don't believe that, have the confidence that that co-op is gonna be long-term. We don't need to make a decision right now. I indicated to Superintendent Friend that because it's the February, month of February, we don't have another meeting scheduled until March 6th. I said, "So, this'll give us all a chance to ruminate it, ruminate on it, give us a chance to reach out to parents, give us a chance to talk to the kids, and then come back in." I think on March 6th, we should plan to make a decision as to whether we want to remain with Sutton, go to Uxbridge, or just clean the slate and not off any kind of a football co-op. My feeling is that if we're looking for a long-term answer, Uxbridge is probably a better answer.
How many students do we have playing football right now?
We had nine this last year, so we, well, nine that would be returning. So, those nine would be the ones that would be allowed to basically choose if they wanted to go to Sutton, or they wanted to go in if we formed a new co-op with Uxbridge or somebody else, you know? And I do think that a lot of them would probably choose to stay with Sutton, just because those are the kids that they know. I know there's some question, I guess, about whether the coach is returning. I, you know, I kinda thought he didn't have a job for a while, and now, I'm not sure if he's decided to come back or not, but he was very popular with the players, too. So, I do think that some of our returning players may choose to wanna stay with Sutton, and I think we can facilitate that. But I just don't know that that's the solution that we wanna keep doing, long-term.
Right.
Right.
My sense is that due to numbers and interest in, you know, I think also there's a financial component to it with Sutton as well. My sense is that in a couple of years, it, they're gonna feel like it's just not sustainable and call it quits. But you had an opportunity to take a look at the email that we did receive. I mean, we thought this was, this was sort of a fait accompli.
Thought it was a done deal.
And we were gonna go look for another opportunity, which we did. And, you know, they had reached out, Uxbridge had reached out to us a couple of times, talking about the program and so forth, and said, you know, "Let's wait and see what happens with Sutton first." Well, we thought we had found out what happened with Sutton, and that changed on Monday. So, I think that we can, it'll give Mr. Romano and Mrs. Oakley some time to reach out to parents and really kinda walk them through all of this, and if anybody who's interested in, then we can come back and give you some greater information as to the feedback we got and make a decision.
Because I don't think the kids were even tracking that we were in these talks with Uxbridge, because we were waiting for Sutton to have the final vote, which we thought was just gonna be a formality, but we still thought it would be, we didn't wanna start talking to the kids about other programs before we knew for sure. I guess it's a good thing we didn't, but now we, we're just gonna present the two sides to them and let those nine kids choose where they wanna go.
Okay. So, there's the update. I don't know if there's any questions on it, or anything that Josh wanted to clarify?
No, I think that the only question that I would, not even a question, I'd guess a comment, would be that, that students would know that, you know, if they're choosing the Sutton path and it drops next year, that's a reality that you need to think about if you're choosing to be staying there. Because then it's, you're another year somewhere else, and now to jump onto Uxbridge, you're behind your other, you know, peers, that's tough. So, I think that's the only thing that I would say to stress and...
Yeah. And they do that camaraderie that they've, they built with them, I understand it, you know?
Right. Which is tough.
Be easier if they're all in one place, but...
Right.
Yeah, and Uxbridge feels like they could accommodate the entire nine that we have now, plus additional...
Plus, yeah.
And I don't, I don't think that we'll have huge numbers, but we, you know, it would probably be 13, 14, maybe 15.
Yeah, I was thinking 15.
Because the other side is that they do have a JV and a, I think, a middle school program, so we could explore the possibility of even middle school down the road. That's not something that we're looking at right now, but we could possibly be looking at that.
Yep. Thank you.
One other thing is it is important to understand that we did not reach out until Uxbridge, until after I received that email from Superintendent Friend.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next thing I had on there is I did provide for you a letter that we received from Representative McKenna and State Senator Fatman, just basically talking a little bit about Chapter 70, and that there's a couple of different plans that are in the, in the works. You know, hopefully there'll be a windfall there for us. However, I'm not anticipating a windfall. Somewhere, the rumor around is that we would be in the 200, 400, that some of the towns in the area have heard that. I don't believe that that's the case. I believe maybe 26,000 might be the number that we will end up with.
Yeah, that's what's in the H1 budget, was 26,000.
Right, 26,000, I think it was, yeah. So, I just wanted to share that letter with you, where fingers crossed, and we're hoping that there might be some additional revenue out there for us. So, that was everything in the superintendent's report, real quickly.
I think it would be worth, you know, and we discussed it, Kevin, about potentially having them come in to, you know, have a budget discussion with us, or, you know, part of our budget discussions with, you know, with the town, and when that comes. You know, it just, we've seen it before, but just to kinda, you know, keep hammering the point home around the fact of, you know, the state's lack of funding and continued mandates and what the position it's put us in, and, you know, just, I still want us to kind of, you know, say, "Oh, we've had that conversation with them, let's, you know, it hasn't gotten us anywhere, let's stop doing that." I think we're just gonna keep having that conversation, so, you know.
Would you want me to reach out to them and invite them to the meeting for the 6th, or do you wanna maybe have them come to a different, a different type of setting?
Let's take that offline and talk about it. I don't wanna just invite them to the 6th unless we have this, kind of something that we wanna talk to them about first, so let's, you know, kinda handle that as we get to put that agenda together, though. Okay? Thank you.
I will absolutely reach out to them, though. All right, that's everything for the superintendent's report.
I lost my agenda. There we go. School committee and subcommittee reports. Lisa.
On the 17th, I signed 18 batches totaling $215,780.92, and nothing unusual.
Okay. Any questions on Council Payable Report? Thank you. That moves us to our consent agenda, first up being our January 16th meeting minutes. I did not see anything wrong with these, but I've missed stuff before, so anyone else have anything?
Oh.
Oh. I just thought something.
Yeah, I just noticed, 'cause this wouldn't be, it's under the, on the second page, FY 20 Administrative and Non-Union Salary Wage Increase.
Yeah.
Didn't notice this earlier, but I wouldn't be talking about townwide. I would only be talking about school-wide, not townwide. I would not be making any comments about townwide.
Good catch.
So, yeah. District-wide, it would be district-wide.
Yeah.
That's what I would've said.
Okay. So, on page 2, under the FY 20020 Administrative and Non-Union Salary Wage Increase, the first sentence should read, 1.75% will be district-wide, not town-wide. So noted. It's tough with these big ones to watch every little thing in there, but...
I can't remember, Mr. Romano, did you actually say 400 boxes of books?
At least, I found a box numbered 400, so I figured there were at least 400 boxes.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember the exact number.
Four, four books per box, right? Or whatever.
Right, that's right. Now you're right, now it comes back to me.
They were light enough for around, so...
Yeah, all right. So, if we don't have any other changes, we looking for a motion to approve the amended minutes?
I will make a motion to approve school committee meeting minutes for January 16, 2019, as amended.
Thank you. A motion from Jillian, a second from Kelly. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed. Thank you. Next, we have new student activity accounts, STEM club, and advisor stipends.
So, maybe, Delaney, if you wanna join us a little bit to tell us a little bit about it, I'll get us started, but...
Nothing in her packet for that, no?
I thought she said she had it. I asked her about it today.
Design Squad Global, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have it.
So, Design Squad Global STEM Club for the Middle School in Douglas, Ms. Finlay secured a grant, for a two-year grant, I believe it is, right, for a STEM after-school enrichment program, 10 weeks, an hour out of the week, an hour each time. Again, it's sort of expanding upon the robotics that we, that you presently have there, it's just another, another layer of enrichment opportunities that are available. Process-wise, maybe you can speak to the process, it's an application process, I believe she said?
I...
Or is it first come, first served?
First come, first served. All right. Do you want me to read, or just summarize?
Just summarize, if you could.
Okay. Again, we've made a commitment to the school committee as part of our school improvement for 2018, 19, and also for 1920, for bringing back, reinvigorating, reconstituting STEM initiatives that Douglas Middle School has had in the past, and they were always the first programs to get cut. So, one of the things that we did this year is, again, to try to spark that interest with students by having a lot of after-school activities, as well as field trip activities. And this Design Squad Global STEM Club is a continuation of that initiative to reinvigorate interest. So, again, Mrs. Finlay applied for a grant through the Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation and secured it, and it actually was only supposed to be for six weeks, but because she's committed to drumming up as much interest as possible, she extended it for 10 weeks. And that, the grant was for materials, and I'll be talking about this later this evening, but STEM initiatives take a lot of stuff, you know? It's all about building, creating, connecting, collaborating, breaking. The engineering part of it is, is learning how things fail and why, and analyzing that. Point being, it just needs a lot of material. So, a lot of the upfront costs and the funding that Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation has provided to her is for the things that she's gonna need. It will be fee-based, and then there's also, we actually, we were under the impression that the grant allowed for a stipend and it didn't, that's why we're, we're here today. And so she is asking for, we are asking for a stipend to help support the initiative, which you think is short money for what it is we're trying to do.
So, I met with Ms. Finlay just to see what her, what the interest level was. She knows that she's gonna get a lot of student interest for it. The other piece of it was that the grant is a two-year commitment, so the funding is over two years for the supplies and materials. However, the expectation was, and we had talked a little bit about this as an admin team, was that that gives us a couple of years to see if there really is that interest, and perhaps down the road, we would add that, the materials into our budget, and continue to offer it year three, year four, year five, for not a great deal of money. The stipend that I have proposed, and I have met with the DTA and they have signed off on it, is a stipend for $862. It is taken from the high school science club, which meets once a month for an hour, 10 months, same ballpark, so we proposed $862 to be the stipend for that position, added to Appendix C, with the approval of DTA and with the approval of the school committee.
How much is the, is the grant annually?
I think 1,206.
Yeah, I think it was 1,200, 1,300, something like that ballpark, yeah.
What do you mean annually?
No, it's actually, it's 1,300 total, 600 and 600 and 600, I believe it is.
For FY, that's for FY 19.
I'm sorry, I had here, if, you know, if we do continue on, you know, how much, you know, we can, you know...
Right. And the other thing that she did say, that's a great point, Brett, was that she did say that a lot of what is in that first two purchases over the two years are the materials that you would need, the tools and so forth that you need. So, you wouldn't need that type of money for going forward for supplies.
Okay. Some of it is reusable, and...
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of it is, you know, clamps and things and stuff like that, so that they would be kept, and you wouldn't need to, so the, the need or the dollar amount would be minimal for supplies and so forth, which, you know, to me, it sounded like a great, a great opportunity, again, committed, going along with the commitment that they've made to bring back STEM, the on-again, off-again, on-again, off-again relationship with Douglas Middle School and STEM, bringing it back on again.
Third time's a charm.
Yep.
How many kids are you thinking would be able to do this?
25.
Yep.
So, you're thinking that, that'd be the cap on what would be allowed in the club?
In terms of student-to-teacher ratio?
Yeah.
And we're only asking for one stipend with LEGO Robotics, due to the popularity of that and the competitive nature. We did have two teachers, and it's doubled the cost. So, with this, we felt that for both the available space that we have to host the after-school program, and the person trained and dedicated, Mrs. Finlay teaches STEM at Freingham State University as an adjunct professor, so it's, again, we got a ringer here.
Yeah.
We just feel it's, 25's still a pretty big classroom, but they are creating, they're hands-on. It's not about what the sage on the stage is saying, it's about the children creating and exploring their own projects.
And it's open to sixth, grade six through eight?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And is there a selection criteria? If you have more than 25 students interested, like how does, how does, how do you pare down if you have 35 kids that wanna be part of it and you can only handle 25?
Again, I think it was just first come, first served.
I think if you're number 26 and you sign your name to number 26...
Okay.
Then you'd be the next one if, if one of the 25 decided they couldn't do the 10 weeks.
Because we did the, we did the application process for the LEGO Robotics, and there were some sore feelings, and we did the application project for the STEM field trip to Medtronic, and there's some sore feelings, and we're not trying to, again, we're trying to maximize the opportunities with this. It's just, whoever's in the queue first.
Did you say that there was a fee? The students would be paying a fee, or?
That was my understanding, that in...
What were you, what are you thinking that would be?
She didn't, she didn't give us a total as of yet. I don't, she didn't give me a...
Nowhere near our athletic fee.
Wow.
But it's, it's a lot lower than that. $35 was sticking in my head, but please don't quote me on that.
And, just to clarify, the kids that would get into this, you couldn't do this and LEGO Robotics, right, to...
I didn't say that.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just, just to, to widen the pool of who can do these STEM things, you know, is, that would be a question I have, is, you know, if you're the first kid to sign up, can you sign up for everything, therefore bumping somebody else out of a spot?
Early bird gets the worm.
I think that's something good to consider, is, you know, if you're already part of...
Something that we can talk with, with Ms. Finlay and Bronzo, and I forget who the other, is it Finlay, Bronzo, doing the robotics?
They're the ones that do LEGO Robotics.
So, that's an easy conversation to be had, that if somebody's already taking advantage of the 10 weeks that we're doing with robotics, that perhaps...
If that's what we determined, I wouldn't have a hard time speaking with those children saying, "Hey, you got your turn at the bat, this is a kid that hasn't, they didn't get to go to Medtronic, they didn't get to do LEGO, could you see your way to having this kid have the same opportunity you've had?" I wouldn't have trouble with that, but we haven't really, we haven't flushed that out yet, but I would not have trouble saying that that became an issue.
I just figure if there's a limit on, I know there's, you know, there's a limit on how many can do LEGO Robotics, and if there's a limit on this, just to open it to as many as possible.
If we do everything right, everyone will have an opportunity for STEM next year, but we'll talk about that later.
Correct.
I'll see it on you.
Good point, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think it's, I think, so there's two things at, at play here. One is the stipend for the position, but I wonder if it makes sense to also say, you know, "We wanna have a STEM enrichment program at the middle school because we'd be appointing somebody to a program that we don't presently have."
Wait a minute, now, you're confusing things here. Okay, this is a student activity account, correct? To be clear, right?
Right.
Okay. So, we do by law have to accept a student activity account, but are you also talking about a separate, different program?
No.
Enrichment would be different, 'cause you're not allowed to have, you two can't be together.
Three motions, one motion to create a STEM club.
Correct.
One motion to create a student activity account to, to support that STEM club, and a motion to have a stipend for the advisor for the new STEM club.
Well, yeah, I actually drafted a motion here for you. I was gonna explain it first, but back to Kevin's question, though, was there also some discussion about an enrichment program?
No. We're just calling it an enrichment program as, as part of, just like I consider robotics to be enrichment, anything that's outside the scope of the classroom.
Can't use that, yeah.
Outside the scope of the classroom.
So, let me explain why I, why I, because under Massachusetts general law with student activity accounts, there can't be any connection to curriculum or daytime academic. They're two totally different things, okay?
Outside the scope.
So, I did, we did, we do have the approved amount that Ms. Means said he took care of for this year, and I also kind of am taking care of FY 20 as well, 'cause you know the current contract goes through FY 20, if the, the program continues next year. You know, that way the stipend will be all set for both years. So, this is what I would recommend, if the school committee is in agreement, move to approve a new student activity fund account for the middle school entitled STEM Club. Additionally, move to approve $862 for the FY 2019 stipend. FY 2020 amount will be $877, a 1.75% increase, both to be added to Appendix C.
So moved.
Is that okay, or does anyone have any questions?
Very good.
Sounds about right.
Sure, I noticed that was excellent.
We have a motion from Jillian.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion?
Sure.
Kayle's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none.
Okay, great, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you.
If there is a fee charge in the future, we can certainly take care of that later on, no problem.
We got the yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, next up, we have our Douglas High School Class of 2020 Disney trip.
Okay, kids.
Come on up.
Leadership of our junior class here at Douglas High School, Advisor Snowy is here as well.
Would you like to introduce yourselves first, before you go on, please?
I'm Nina Carnero.
I'm Olivia Forrest.
And I'm Sarah Walasko.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm the Vice President of the Class of 2020. On behalf of the whole junior class, I would like to start out by thanking the school committee for giving us the opportunities to speak with you tonight. My fellow officers and I are here with our class advisor, Ms. Snowy, to hopefully obtain the committee's approval for our senior class trip to Disney next year. trip to Disney next year. With the approval of next year's school calendar, we would like to plan a class trip to Disney World in Orlando, Florida during April vacation.
I'm the class historian of the class of 2020, and seniors have gone on this trip year after year, many of us, many of them being our older brothers, sisters, and friends. And they've shared with us what a wonderful experience Disney has been, and we'd like to continue this tradition.
I'm the secretary for the class of 2020, and we feel that there are numerous benefits to this trip. Some of our students have never been given an opportunity to spend days away from our parents. So this trip will give us a sense of independence and it allows us to get a glimpse of what college life may be like as we'll be away from our parents and sharing a home with three of our classmates.
Our class has grown up together and most of us have attended school together since kindergarten. This trip will provide one last wonderful experience with our peers and teachers before we embark on the rest of our lives.
By making this trip a school-sponsored event, we know that student handbook rules will apply at all times. And this will remind us that we need to avoid senioritis and continue to work hard in our classes and abide by the school rules at all times. And we all do that anyways, but this trip will provide us that extra incentive to stay on track and stay good throughout the rest of the year.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to be here tonight, and we hope you'll consider approving this wonderful trip for us. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them for you.
Thank you.
Well done, ladies.
Thank you.
So they'll be exploring dates once we get the calendar back out and also they'll come back and present where they're going to be staying, locations for emergency and so forth. I think what they're looking right now is to be able to go forward and tell their class that they can begin the process of planning and fundraising and get going on the matters and the details that go into the trip.
I just have one question. So it says here the primary fundraising will be the Gillette Stadium fundraising, but it also says a variety of fundraisers. What are some of the fundraisers?
Probably more like the Mexicali thing we're doing tonight and just like bake sales and car washes and stuff like that, that we can easily do.
A lot of promoting for that, right?
Yeah.
So that you guys can get these ticket prices as low as you can.
I'm sure your parents would appreciate it.
Yes, yes, they probably would.
So the only question I have, and it's honestly for you ladies, but I know earlier this school year, we had a discussion with regards to foreign language trip and conflicts with the Disney trip. And has there been any discussion, and maybe Mr. Romano, this is a question for you about?
There was a Portugal, Spain.
Portugal, Spain trip, and I believe they are still trying to actually fill that trip.
For this upcoming summer? And have they talked about any trips for next year yet?
No, no, we just talked about trips for next year.
Right now, right.
Yeah.
We want to make sure we get everybody back from Spain, Portugal, and California first.
Okay.
So they would need to come back at a later date, once we finalize the calendar for next year and all that, to let us know the dates and so forth, to see if there are any concerns with regards to missing school and so forth.
Yeah, okay.
I just have a question. Should I be abstaining from this language, seeing my daughter's on the other side? Does that matter?
Just because you'd like to get rid of her for a week?
Well, I might have to abstain.
All right. So I'll move to approve the class of 2020's class trip to Walt Disney, Florida in April of 2020.
Jillian, second from Kelly. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none.
Ladies, if you could do me one small favor when you're talking to your classmates, please let them know that there are opportunities for them to lose the opportunity to go on the trip, so that when Mr. Romano has to break the news to them that because they did what they did, they've lost their money and they can't go on the trip. Having had the pleasure of doing that on a number of occasions, it's not, not a lot of fun. So there are definitely parameters around it in order to be able to go on the trip. And they need to be aware that those, that they can lose the trip based on the contract that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still like the idea that going to Disney is for the college.
Well, my kid's not. So next up, we have a request to close school choice for the remainder of 2018-19 school year. Mr. Romano is coming to join us.
Johnny, come lately on the school choice closing. So we've had a sudden influx of kids coming from other schools for school choice. And it's, I mean, there's good and bad. The negative is that, well, first, a lot of time when you get kids this time of year, they are looking for a fresh start because of their previous behavior and those behavior patterns don't always change. And the other situation that we, that we really run into is that their schedules don't necessarily transfer very well. And so now the student is either way behind in math or they're way ahead in math. And usually it's that they're way behind in math. Or they have courses on their schedules that there is nothing even remotely comparable to what we have, and we don't have half-year courses. So there's also very little financial gain to bringing in a student this time of year. There is some, I think school choice money is basically proactive, I mean.
Prorated, yes, it is.
Prorated, proactive. So what we're proposing is that we would close school choice at the high school for the remainder of this year. With the, so if somebody did call inquiring, we would let them know that we're still open for 1920. We'll take 100 more kids for 1920, but for right now, we'd like to kind of ease ourselves a little bit because we're, it's really getting hard to manage so many kids coming in whose schedules just don't line up.
It is kind of exception to the rule. Usually if a kid's coming in, they're going to, by October, they're here and so forth. Josh is absolutely 100% right, which is that I took a course in English that doesn't relate. Now I've got to get into a course, but I missed the first half of the course. And that doesn't always work out. They've, they've taken their history classes in a different sequence. Now they've missed the first half of the course and they're getting the second half, but they never cover the first half of the course. So it is, it is a little bit problematic. It's not, not as much so if it happens in October, but this is an exception. I don't recall in the time that I was here, getting, you know, kids who were coming in this late in the year. Maybe somebody who's moving to the town, but not, not on a school choice type of thing. So, you know, I think it makes some sense.
Is this something that we should consider as a, as a policy going forward?
It would probably be a good idea.
As of October 31st?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I feel like too, there's, like you said, the comments that you have shared, it's, it's not really in favor.
And is that, is that the difficulties of integrated student at this point in the year, is that a uniquely high school problem? Or would anyone else, is that a problem with the primary school, elementary school, as big a problem? Or is not as big a problem with you guys?
Our schedules are not like the high school schedules, but more grade, fourth grade.
Right.
Might be a little bit of change.
Okay. So maybe it's a high school only policy or maybe even middle school, Mr. Delaney?
And I think that we could still, you know, a student who's being bullied or something like that, there's still.
Say yes.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I know, no, I understand, I know.
It's amazing, that's me all the time.
We were asking if the problem with integrating students at this point in the year was a uniquely high school problem, or if it would also be an issue for our lower schools? And if we have a policy that would just, you know.
Well, I think that's why Brian came up. I forget when, was it November, December that you?
We closed.
Right, I think that's very something, I think.
We have picked up a couple of families that moved into Douglas.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, maybe something that we consider from a policy perspective, that for middle school and high school, that, you know, we wouldn't take any more school choice after X date, whatever it is, October 15th, whatever we deem.
Right.
Kelly?
I agree with it in theory, but I'm always thinking, you know, there's always that odd case that you'd want to be able to consider on a case, almost a case by case.
Yeah, so maybe it's a policy and then, or it needs, you know, any school choice beyond, they would need approval.
Some sort of room for, like you said, if somebody's having problems at another school that's not of their doing and they need to switch in.
Right. That, that has happened. So you could, you could do it with a caveat that if Mr. Romano thinks that the extenuating circumstances warrant it, that he could go ahead and, he could go ahead and admit somebody. But I think at this point, because it is so late in the year, because it does change class numbers, class sizes as well, and especially in light of the fact that he probably had about six or seven new students, school choice in, I think, right?
In the last month, yeah.
Wow.
I think five school choice and then one who left St. John's to come back here. So it does get.
And that's something that.
It's an anomaly, but.
It does, yeah, that does happen. And that's, you know, I mean, he's a Douglas resident, so he does belong here. So, but, you know, I think it just makes for a hard transition for the kids to.
And maybe it isn't a set policy, maybe something we just make sure we address every October to say, how do we feel about this this year?
Yeah, do you want to close?
You know, and take a vote at that time and just so we don't, we don't run into this.
That makes sense.
Okay. So we'll be looking for a motion to, to close out school choice for the high school for the remainder of 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Motion from Jillian.
Second.
A second, a second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none.
Stay right there, young man.
I have more books for you.
Excellent.
Smaller batch of books this time. We're getting towards the end. I'll do the same thing. I'll post them in the Swickel schools and the DBC schools to see if anybody wants to come and pick them up. We didn't end up with any takers on the last set. I had a couple titles that I donated to the, while I'm setting aside for the town library, the school library, and then the rest will just kind of put back into nature.
So this is a continuation of our discussion from last week.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions? Not last week, last meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the disposal of the Douglas High School books deemed to have no value on the attached list.
Okay. Motion from Jillian, a second from Lisa, that good. Any other discussion?
Josh, real quickly, just, I noticed the Fountainhead is in there and Virginia Woolf is in there. And they're listed as excellent and.
They are. So those are ones that I'll really try to push on people.
Is there a reason why they, are they just not in the curriculum any longer?
Not in the curriculum anymore. Yeah, the Fountainhead books, I was told Fountainhead and Anthem, which are both Ayn Rand titles, were given to us for free. Because there're just massive sets of them. And Virginia Woolf was pretty common in curriculums when, when I was first teaching English, and I haven't seen a lot of schools that use it lately. It's really good, Elizabeth Taylor, one of her husband's movies.
Richard Burton, of course.
Richard Burton, yeah, it's a very good movie.
Go back that far.
So if you, if you want to enjoy it, I recommend the film.
Could we move, could you see if there's a local district that might want that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll push.
Maybe a, you know, even some others.
Yeah, I will. I definitely will, yeah. Because, and I'll, I'll put a caveat on it, like, those are in great shape and those could really be classroom sets for somebody.
Usually the, we get rid of the ones that are not in great shape. But, okay, so you'll, you'll try to reach out to someone and see if they'll take them.
So we already had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Seeing none. Okay, so while you're here, why don't we jump out of order a little bit and move to our Douglas High School game supervisor position? Is that okay, Mr. Mainz?
Totally cool with me. So now and then, Ms. Sokol is not available and I'm not available and Mr. Vega is not available to cover a game. And so it happened once this year. And we just want to kind of create a position where we can have somebody who knows what they're doing, who can kind of fill in and cover down. So we'd probably generate a small list of people that could do it. But it would literally be Ms. Sokol's son is getting an award for wrestling and I'm defending our great nation and Mr. Vega is lost at sea. And just somebody would have to cover down. And so we, you know, we do have a couple of people who are, who work closely with the athletic department, Mr. Stan, Ms. Bergeron, who would be great to do that. But we just want to create like that sort of backup plan. And we actually had a game that was postponed. We were supposed to play with Uxbridge because they were in the same situation. The principal, vice principal, and the athletic director, none of them were available to work the game and they ended up postponing the game. And we don't want to get into that. It's tough to reschedule games, so.
My only question is, what's the difference between the 75 and 50 for?
Some teams come in with only, like, some of the worst of teams only bring a varsity team. They don't bring a JV team, so they'll only do one game.
Oh, so it's both, right?
Yeah, so both. And again, my, my concern with this is that this would be extenuating circumstances and it would not be something that I'm not going to come tonight and we're going to, we're going to put Jillian in charge of the game and so forth. Because the understanding that we have is that we, either we have an AD and assistant principal or a principal, that we prefer that one of the three is always at a home game if we can. And if they, if only in a situation where they can't all be there, like Josh just mentioned, then we would, we would implement this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the creation of the position of game supervisor to be used for events when the athletic director, high school principal, and high school assistant principal are unavailable. The stipend will be $75 per DM for junior varsity and varsity games and $50 per DM for varsity games only.
Will this be added to appendix C as well? Is this that type of?
No.
Oh, no, no, this is just, yeah.
In the same places like the ticket takers and clock.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion from Jillian.
Second.
We have a second from Kelly. Any other discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
District-wide disposal of obsolete technology equipment.
Mrs. Souza, if you're joining us.
Okay, just looking for approval to dispose of obsolete, non-functioning technology equipment. It accumulates over time. A lot of broken iPads that have been accumulating from one building, old monitors. Need to toss them out. Well, actually, no. We need to have a company that comes and takes them and recycles them responsibly.
They will be responsibly disposed of.
Yes.
And they take care of all the hard drives and all the things that we don't want in there. This, this, it looks, from the list, it will clear a lot of things out of the buildings at least.
Yes.
We've been hanging on to a lot of things, you know, stealing from parts.
My room next door is pretty full, so it'd be nice to clear off some space there.
So the CRT monitors, I guess, the iPads, these are ones with smashed screens, non-functioning batteries, just.
Broken screens, the batteries. And, you know, they've gotten to an age which the cost to replace those parts, it's just not, it's not, it doesn't make sense to do so.
Okay. Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the disposition of obsolete technology items with no salvage value as attached.
Motion from Jillian.
Second.
A second from Lisa. Any other discussion on this?
We have a company that you, that you've used year after.
Yes, I use the same company. There's no charge to us for it. We come, clear it out and we leave a goodbye.
Great.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, the FY 2020 rates for secretarial, paraprofessional, and ABA therapist substitutes.
As you know, on January 16th, we brought forth to you the FY 20 rates for all of the the non-union and administrative categories, but we did not increase those particular rates, the subrates for secretarial ABAs and paraprofessionals at the time. But recently, the Massachusetts minimum wage was increased to $12 per hour. Now, just to be clear, municipalities are not required to pay Massachusetts minimum wage rate. But after review, we thought that an adjustment was warranted, has not been adjusted since FY 2015. And also, you know, whether we're legally obligated to do it or not, if everyone else is having their, you know, their rate increased from 11 to 12, and that's considered the minimum, you know, we thought it was the right thing to do. It would basically be annually, it would cost about $1,700 annually at the, at the most. That's on, that's in a year when, you know, say like we've used a lot of paraprofessional subs, but other times, actually, some of the rates, some of the use of subs has decreased. For instance, the secretarial for the middle school and the elementary, since we added the halftime, that's between the two schools. So that has decreased. So we were asked about it from the town. I guess the town side has done, has done that, even though, again, it's not obligated. Any rates that were below the $12, they were increasing to 12. So we actually received a phone call from the town wondering if we were doing it as well. So that's when I decided to review it. It just seems like the right thing to do. You want to obtain and retain people to do these positions.
No, we've addressed, teacher substitutes are all in the year when the rate's there, how much trouble we've been having with those. So it doesn't seem to make sense. You've got to be competitive in the marketplace.
Yeah. So each one was raised, actually, so each one was raised the $1. So you see in the motion, the ABA therapist is currently at 12, but we did raise it to 13, just to be consistent between the categories.
Any questions for Ms. Keegan?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY 2020 hourly rates as follows, which is an increase of $1 per hour to what was approved on January, not 46, what was it?
16.
16, 2019. Oh. School secretary substitute, $12. Paraprofessional substitute, $12. ABA therapist substitute, $13.
Okay, we have a motion from Jillian.
Second.
A second from Lisa. Any other questions or discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? You're abstained. Seeing none. Done. All right. Let's clear the dissent agenda. Where are we getting there? Next up, we move on to our school business and operation management report. Ms. Keegan, again.
Okay, I do not have, actually, I didn't have any time to do any transfer requests, so I'll have to wait till March. Moving on, just wanted to provide to you another update on the FY 2019 capital projects. I did provide one, I think it was a couple of months ago. So, and again, we want to thank the town for their generosity with regard to providing us with these six capital projects for FY 2019. And so the security cameras, we, they have been ordered, the wiring's been completed, and the installation should be fairly soon. wiring's been completed, and the installation should be fairly soon. As you, oh, tomorrow?
Yep.
Well, there you go. Geez, I should have provided this. Too bad we couldn't have come two days earlier. We could have had one more off that. As you see, the, it's slightly more than what was approved for the capital projects, and that was just taken out of the general fund.
Okay.
The water booster pump has been completed, and the amount that was awarded was $32,640. It came in at a cost of $27,967.69. The door key security, we are still working on that. That's kind of a big, it's complicated. I'm hoping to get that done in April, if at all possible. Tractor loader for $14,414 came in at $13,326.29. We have received that. The high school compressor, we were awarded $10,000, came in at $9,270. That's been completed. And the middle school door card reader, we were awarded $10,000. It came in at $8,938.28, and that's been completed. And as you can see, most of them are under budget, and certainly we're not allowed to go over budget, so. So, you know, thus far, anyway, the town will have a little bit more money that they'll have turned over. And then we covered the difference in the security cameras that had to go a little bit over from our own general fund. So that's the capital projects update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we ever, not really for future, I know we had to submit our list for this year recently. Was it extensive, I guess, or anything new? Maybe in a future meeting, we can put on the agenda what we requested for this year.
Yeah. Yeah, it's mostly the same things.
Yeah, I know, a lot of stuff carries over.
Yeah, year after year after year after year.
Any new items that you'd want to think of?
Think of anything brand new.
We'll save that for another time.
Yeah, no, definitely, yep.
It just hit me. Hit the wall.
Is that a hint? All right, so we will move on to our next item. Courtney, which is our 2020 superintendent's preliminary proposed budget? Both can be presenting together on this.
Okay, I'll start off with it. Okay, so we've been working on the budget proposal. Again, it's a preliminary budget proposal. We know that there's always going to be some changes and modifications and adjustments and so forth. Again, the, somebody has to click right click up there, I'm not sure who it is, but thank you, Cindy. So the primary focus that we're looking to do is, again, we talked about growth in our academics, our extracurriculars, our programs at all grade levels. That is continuing to be our focus. This is all sort of a continuation, if you will, to what we presented two years ago, and again, last year, a plan for moving the district forward. This plan was also presented, as you know, in the last couple of years, directly to board of selectmen meetings, FinCom meetings, school committee meetings, and tribe board meetings. We have also done public meetings on our, on our plan of moving forward. It was all part of the budget process. Once again, I think we've done a nice job of giving careful consideration in deliberating on what we really wanted to do. We've, again, effectively collaborated as a group. All of us have had a part in this, and all of us have been heard, and all of us are contributors to what will be the end budget. Again, an honest assessment is being done. We're taking, we've done an honest assessment of what our strengths are, what our areas of need might be, and how we plan on growing as a district. That is exactly the same thing that we've done this time. If you recall, a concern that we had heard quite a bit was, what are we doing to stem the tide of students choicing out, students choosing to go to Blackstone Valley Technical Vocational or Norfolk? And so we created that plan with the express purpose of generating competitiveness within our own school district that would keep students here. That, again, is still our focus. It is indeed a comprehensive plan. It goes from pre-K. You might have to go forward. I think, Cindy, I'm just kind of going real quickly. I know that the people are trying to want to get home with the rain coming in and so forth, but it is a pre-K through age 22 plan. I mean, it covers everything and anything. It might be a little bit too far, but.
Yeah.
Originally, it was a three to five-year plan. We are actually in year three of what we had talked about. If I could go back and remind the committee that three years ago, with Ms. Keegan's input as well, we were looking to stabilize, not reduce positions, not necessarily add anything, but stay stable to re-instill confidence in the district. Last year, we were able to add a few positions with the override, and then the plan that we are presenting this year would build upon those two years. We also said at a number of instances, focus was on sustainability. We did not want to bring in programs that would turn around and have to be taken apart. So that is our goal, is to try to sustain what we've done and to build upon it. Again, as practical and pragmatic as we possibly can, everyone knows that in 2019, there was a $1,500,000 override. And as a result of that, we did make some decisions on positions, totaling roughly 3.5 FTEs that were added in different schools during the, for this school year. I've asked that the administrators will come up and talk a little bit about that in just a second. Again, if we're going to add new positions for the upcoming year, our goal would once again be sustainability. If we're bringing these positions in, there's a reason for it, and we want to be able to sustain them. So what we are going to give to you today, what we provide for you today, is what we would consider to be a preliminary, but an optimal budget proposal for the district. And I know that Ms. Keegan will talk a little bit about how she has used some of the additional funding sources. We know that we must comport and fit within the appropriation from the town, and that is always going to be our goal, and we will always do so. That being said, if we were to receive a 1% increase, it's roughly $133,000. If we were to get a 2% increase, it's roughly $266,000. That would be additional beyond what we received last year, which was $13,456,735, I believe it was.
Did you get that?
From one of your documents.
No.
Oh, that would be, that would be the 1% increase.
Okay.
That would be the 1% increase.
Okay.
As is always the case, it would be up to the committee to decide, you know, if they would like us to go in a little deeper into school choice, a little deeper into revolving, if we needed to use some circuit breaker. We hope that there'll be some additional money, as I mentioned earlier, in chapter 70. I don't anticipate, but there is, there's talk of a little bit more money, which would be certainly welcomed, if we could certainly use it. We are completely committed to the plan. I know that you, as a committee, have also been very committed to this plan. Our goal is to positively impact our students, also to generate interest in people coming back to us. Once again, to create a buzz in the area that Douglas is the place to be. Don't, you don't need to choice out. You can stay here. We would like to offer some new things that might retain students who might go to a vocational school. And we've talked a lot about that for the last two years, to be exact. And I know that Brett has gone out on a number of occasions and joined us. I'm assuming that the basketball game is now officially over, but Brett has gone out and has explored and has talked about a number of these things, a number of these initiatives, and how we think it'll make us competitive and keep and attract students to our district. So if I could ask the administrators to come on up, and they can talk a little bit about each of their buildings. I simply asked them to, I should say simply, I asked them to talk a little bit about this year's budget, so that you get some feedback as to how the changes are going, and then to talk a little bit about what they've proposed for next year as well. All right, so it looks like, nearly, it looks like.
Yes. All right.
You win.
I win. All right.
So we're looking at last year.
Yep, we're looking at last year. So basically, what we looked at from the monies that we were able to acquire for last year was we were able to add an inclusionist to the elementary school. What this really assisted with was allowing us to meet caseloads in a better way, have students tested in a thorough manner. So we were able to really get an idea of whether or not they were eligible for special education services. So we ended up hiring somebody that took over all pullout services, which were specialized math and specialized reading, as well as taking over initial testing responsibility. Then, looking forward to this year.
This year, February.
We just came here, was it two or three weeks ago now, and we had this position approved. We are in the process of locking this up. So we have conducted interviews, and we had three people that we found were viable candidates. Actually, had four, but one person wasn't able to make it. And the committee unanimously voted for one specific individual. Because contracts haven't been signed, and the appointment letter and all that isn't done, I don't want to give any further information, but we are in the process of moving forward with that. What that is going to result in at the elementary school is moving towards one special education teacher per grade level. This will assist in instruction. This will assist not only special education students, but also general education students, as well as general education teachers. There's going to be a more collaborative approach to how we are going to teach the kids. Do you have anything you want to add to that as far as?
Steph's very excited about it.
All right. Steph is very excited about it, so it should be great. In November, or maybe late October, I had come forward and requested a full-time intensive special needs teacher for the elementary school. The purpose of this, it really, in many ways, was a mandated position. We had two kids that had come into the district, they had moved in from other districts, and we really saw the need with the combination of kids that were already here, as well as the kids that moved in. We needed to create a program that really met their needs, and all of these kids met the criteria for intensive special needs. So that has, that has come together very, very nicely. The kids' needs are being met, but at the same time, they are being included in different activities with their peers and like that.
Okay, so prior to this year, primary always shared the adjustment counselor with the elementary. So that meant we had a .4, and elementary had a .6. So with the addition, now that we both have our own, it's made a huge impact at the primary school, because you can start all of those social thinking programs early. Our adjustment counselor has a schedule. She is in every classroom every week, at least once. I mean, she pops it in and out when needed, but she's presenting a lesson, and the teachers are there to hear the verbs and the verbiage about social thinking. Before, she would pop into the library once a month, and so the teachers weren't there to hear all of that. So, you know, they can reinforce it now in the classroom. So one week, one month, it was on your feelings or a big problem and a little problem. And so everyone's hearing the same kind of thing now. So that's a huge plus. She's doing a parent newsletter every month. We're working on a website for parents to, again, learn the verbiage. I'm in the red zone, I'm in this zone, or, you know, my feelings, how are you feeling today, things like that. She's also set up some lunch bunch groups that are just starting. So these are targeted with kids with specific social skills. So we're trying to group them accordingly. One group is a group of kindergarten girls, because they might not be so nice sometimes to each other, and they're working on those things, like, how did that make you feel when she said that to you? So they're learning at an early age, which is great. And those groups we have, you can phase in and out of, too, which is nice, and the parents have given permission. She also works really closely with parents, so if a parent calls and says, hey, something happened, you know, at home this weekend, so our adjustment counselor is dealing with that, where before, everything came, you know, pretty much to the principal's office. She's the liaison with the DCF. She's liaison with family continuity. So, I mean, I could just go on and on. It's just a huge plus for us to have an adjustment counselor full-time. And then the coding and the robotics, that's been so much fun. I can't even tell you, the kids are absolutely loving it. We've had a little teacher trainings at our staff meetings and at the PD day. One is Colby the Mouse, because Colby cheese. And so all the teachers learned how to do that one. That one's a simpler one. And then at the last PD day, all the teachers learned how to do dash and dot with the help of Mr. Villamere. I think he enjoys it more than the kids, though. So that's just starting to get into the classes now, the dash and dot, because it's a little bit more complicated. You program it on an iPad versus just the mouse pushing the buttons. So that's been a huge plus. The teachers are loving it, and the kids are loving it.
It's a great thing to push it down to that level. That's.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
All right, next up at the elementary school. We also, obviously, like Cindy said, now have a full-time adjustment counselor at our school. A lot of the similar things to what Cindy said, the social thinking lessons, being able to meet with students on an individual, small group basis, just that on-the-job triaging that happens throughout the day. I've never worked at a school without a full-time adjustment counselor, and I have no idea how Tracy did it last year, being at two different schools, because Miss Blessing is, from start of the day to the end of the day, slammed with students, working with them, helping make sure they have what they need, working with families, writing 504 plans, helping make assessment schedules. Just like Cindy said, the list goes on and on. And so that has made a huge difference for our school, and something that was very much needed. We also added a .5 office clerk, so we have someone that comes about lunchtime until the end of the day. And that very much, it helps our secretaries get a lunch, which was not always happening, but it also helps get some of those other things done that we're always getting pushed to the side, making copies of notes that need to go home to families, answering phone calls, helping organize things within the office. And just that extra set of hands really makes a big difference, making us be able to communicate better with our families and our community, and better customer service for people that are coming into the school. You know, people aren't waiting as long to get their kids when they're trying to get them dismissed and things like that. So that's been a very positive impact for us. We have before and after-school lessons that started in October that was approved for fourth and fifth grade students. I think we have about 50 students that are involved in those lessons. And it's just a great opportunity for our fourth and fifth graders to have instrumental music lessons available to them. The students are excited about music, and moving forward, if this is something that we can sustain, I think we're going to see a positive impact in our middle school and high school programs, which I think is a much-needed thing for our students. And we also were able to add a .5 school nurse this year. We have a lot of students this year with significant medical needs, whether it's diabetes or a lot of different things, changing and things like that. And so having that extra .5 person has allowed Miss Brundage to not only take care of the student needs, but also get up into classrooms and do fluoride treatments and work with teachers when they're learning about different things with health, and she's able to go in and provide her expertise. And so that's been a very positive impact for our school as well.
One other thing with the adjustment counselor position is it has also given Mr. Aronian some flexibility now that he did not have last year. He was, I mean, he was the first line of defense, everything that was happening, which took him away from, you know, maybe being able to help in the middle school. So that, we anticipated that was going to happen, and it really has been a tremendous benefit for him being able to be more effective, more structured, get in to do evaluations and so forth as well that he couldn't do last year with, you know, he was, he was the person that they went to.
Caber, one more point?
The other thing with the school adjustment counselors is we are seeing an influx of kids with generalized anxiety disorder, panic disorder, and clinical depression. So some of these kids, not all of the kids automatically go on IUP for that. Some of these kids have a Section 504 accommodation plan. And the school adjustment counselors at each school are the liaison for that. So that's been very helpful, because we're seeing it at the younger grades now, where we never did before, so.
Okay. Very happy to report out on this, as it was a big ask last year in terms of what the investment in the middle school has meant. To talk a little bit about the intangibility of culture and climate, I can tell you that there's a tangible improvement in the student experience at the middle school, having full-time related arts teachers. If you remember, we had, we still only have three related arts teachers, but they're teaching. We have a related arts teacher. I think it would also be appropriate right now for me to introduce, we have a wonderful new music band and chorus teacher. Her name is Miss Justine Strikars. She is a graduate of University of Connecticut, and she was a drum major. She is a graduate of University of Connecticut, and she was a drum major for both their basketball and football band program.
I'm a major too.
She's a drum major, not like a boom-boom.
She also has her master's and did her student teaching in two different, two different middle schools in Connecticut as well with a master's degree. And she's jumped right in. She's in the classroom today and yesterday, so she's there.
Already had chorus practice and band practice, and it's really been, again, Mr. Doncor has been wonderful over the last 20 days during this transition in keeping our kids' pipes and fingers moving in terms of continuing to practice. And then he's also been able to liaison as she transitioned in. So I have a good friend of mine, Jeff Luzey, who likes to say that music is life, and I agree with him, that we've had a 300% increase in band participation at the middle school. We've had a 600% increase in choral and the chorus participation. I think that's, those are very tangible numbers, and the kids are having a ball. They really enjoy it. That's the fun stuff. And those are the things I always talked about. When I came to Douglas Middle School three years ago, it was five core classes, double math, .5 sparse related arts, and it just didn't seem fun. We stripped the fun out of the interesting things. We've built that up over the last three years. Here we are today. Again, we've got a wonderful physical education and health program. Ms. Shanks is doing a spectacular job with that. As Ms. Urquhart just talked about, we are seeing a, I don't, it could be deemed alarmist to say epidemic of anxiety issues that we see plaguing kids in school. And in the health class currently, they're talking about what mental health issues look like and the stigmas of that and the healing process around that and coping mechanisms, as well as also the healthy mind, body, and spirit that she talks about. I think it's been invaluable. I really think she's done a great job. And then we have the physical aspect of it. Again, she's a CrossFit coach. She's our cheerleading coach. She's really dived right into it.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Can you just remind me, is the health course for all the grades in?
It is.
I thought so. I just wanted to double-check that. I think that's fantastic.
Yep. And then, last but of course not least, Ms. Murphy, who had been a teacher currently, but we made her full-time, teaching both traditional art classes but also digital design. And if you walk in our school, they're updating content weekly, really neat stuff, the kids using their iPads to create digital presentations. And we're still kind of in the have fun with and explore it. The teachers have been challenged, I want to see these in the classroom and rather than trifolds and dioramas and static presentations, I want dynamic digital presentations with voiceover music, graphic material drawn that's more engaging and can be shared with many others. So what we have is, what we borrowed money is talent. And what we did is improve the student experience and improve climate and culture. And I'm very, very pleased with it. And if you wanted me to borrow you more, I can put some quantifiable numbers as to how our performance has been academically. I think because kids are happier or a more positive experience, our numbers have gone up. And I have a number of data points, but I don't know if we're there yet, but it's, we have academic numbers to prove.
That's good.
It's having an impact.
Growth. Impact, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you.
So, the stuff that we've done at the high school, can you pass that down to them? The stuff that we've done at the high school has kind of been with the intent of making us competitive with other schools to turn that tide of school choice. That was sort of starting to go in the wrong way. And so I spent a little bit of time last night and today going through the programs of studies and websites of the other schools in the DVC and Northbridge and Uxbridge, because we've had some, we've developed some relationships with those schools as well, to look at kind of the major programs that they have versus what we have. And, you know, it kind of illustrates the need that we have to continue to expand, because if you don't, if you don't add new things, if you're not working on new innovative things, you're really falling behind. Maintaining the status quo really means falling behind everybody else. And I think the last thing we want is to fall way behind, like Uxbridge, 10 minutes down the road and start losing to school choice to them. So we, as part of last year's plan and then what we want to try to do for next year, we look to try to approach some of those. So we did with the money that we got, we increased our graduation requirements to meet mass core standards. We had the lowest graduation rate meeting mass core standards, which is the same as the standards to get into the UMass school system. We had the lowest percentage of graduates meeting those mass core standards in the dual valley. And so now we've added the foreign language requirement. As you can see, there are five out of seven schools have a foreign language requirement, and now we do too, to try to make that number, to meet that number. We added a robotics program. I think five out of seven schools have robotics programs on there, so it's a way to keep up and continue to offer some of the same things that other people have. The Academic Success Center was an intervention that we did for students who don't qualify for IEPs, for special education services, but to give them help with their transition from middle school to high school and bring those grades up. We added a full-time school adjustment counselor, Lindsay Pullen, who has done a tremendous job. She sees about 20 to 30 kids a week, including 20 kids that she has on a weekly and bi-weekly caseload. She supervises, I think it's 49 504 plans. She took over the 504 components so guidance counselors could focus on actually doing some guidance counseling in terms of career and college readiness with kids. So that was a huge thing. She's also dealt with 16 crisis situations, mental health crisis situations, and we've had six hospitalizations among students at the high school. And she was the kind of the hospital liaison for three of those. So she's really been a big piece in trying to maintain that health. You know, I mean, in five months, 16 kids that were in a significant enough crisis that we were, you know, contacting Riverside and other agencies to have kids screened.
The other piece of that, if I could just jump in, is that prior to Lindsay being there, if Mr. Romano was in a meeting and Mr. Vega was in a meeting and Ms. Coppin was free, she had to triage that, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. There should be a go-to person who is managing all that, whom has all the connections, and that's what we had been looking for all along. And the high school's seeing tremendous impact from that. And it's also allowing Josh and Desi to do evaluations and also to deal with some disciplinary issues without having to, you know, go and contact the hospital or call for a 911 or those types of things. So it's, it's a lot of stuff that you, there's a lot of benefit from that one position.
She's also started doing some proactive things. So she ran a group to help kids to deal with stress that met in the fall. She has another group that's coming up pretty soon, and I can't remember what the theme of that one was. It was a different theme. She lets the kids kind of pick themes and then kids sign up for it. So she's doing some proactive programs too. We started collaborative teaching, co-teaching, if you will. I didn't put that on the chart because everybody else is already doing it pretty much. So we piloted that this year. It was, I think it went very well, and we'd like to expand that. I think it is the best way to ensure that students with disabilities are, have access to the same curriculum that everybody else does. We invested in school safety equipment, like the safety buckets, for example. And, you know, I can't imagine that we would have had that money without the override. We invested in advanced placement textbooks. Some of our advanced placement textbooks were getting to be about the age of our students, and, you know, the tests evolve over time, and then the content of those books doesn't necessarily match what's going to be on the test. So we were able to invest in replacing a lot of those books. We were establishing a pathways program, which is something that several of the other districts have. They're sort of college majors. I'll do a full presentation on that. But it's another way of giving our kids sort of some guidance in, towards college and career readiness. And we were able to maintain our athletic user fees at a pretty reasonable rate.
Very good. So the reason we wanted to share that, and I do anticipate that we will share it again in a larger, more open forum, is for people that, there was a request for additional support, financial support, and money is hard to come by, but we want people to realize that there is tremendous benefit that we are attaining because of that investment. So just to build on that, and I guess we'll go real quickly through what we have asked for, for 2020, starting with Mrs. Urquhart real quickly. We have...
Yep, move along. So basically about two years ago, what we did was we identified at the elementary school that we had a cohort of students that were having a lot of difficulty within the inclusion classroom. They were having trouble accessing even their IEP goals and needed a level of modification that was beyond what we could do within an inclusive classroom. So we did some assessment, and we identified that the students required a more specialized, substantially separate program. We called it the Academic Center. Through that level of identification, there are going to be three kids that are going to move up next year to the middle school, but we also have two kids currently that require that type of program at the middle school. So for next year, we will be proposing an Academic Center teacher for the middle school. Do you have anything further, Mr. Delaney, on that?
I should, let me, say what you want. Before Ms. Keegan has a meltdown over here.
Should I?
No, no, you were okay. It was me who was wrong here. I should have, to be clear, this is the additional adds that you have at your place.
Yeah, these aren't included in the budget. We'll be going over the budget.
These are the additional adds.
These are the additional needs.
The budget that you have in front of you is a level, level service budget. These are additional adds, just so that we're all on the same page. I should have said that before, and I apologize. Sorry, Mrs. Urquhart.
It's quite all right. Okay. So to jump off of what Mr. Romano was saying, there has been great success this year at the high school level with the co-teaching model. You know, we've seen special education and general education teachers become very motivated by this model. And in addition, most importantly, we've seen kids benefit from what can come from this. Like Josh said, it really ensures that kids can meet the curriculum and have the opportunity to be included with their peers. So the thought process was, again, this is an extra, an extra thing that we're looking at, but the thought was, like the elementary school, moving towards two additional special education teachers, so you had one for each grade level, hence resulting in a greater opportunity to co-teach. The things that we have to consider when we're looking at a co-teaching model is, it isn't just a special education teacher and a general education teacher within a variety of classrooms. It's also testing, formal testing, standardized testing that has to take place by the special education teacher, report writing, IP writing, meetings, things like that. So, and the other addition is something we do now, but we want to maintain is academic support, which is very helpful for kids that are on IEPs.
Could you mention just a little bit about the fact that you'll be reducing paraprofessional staff?
Yes.
Which will transfer the money over to the position.
Yes. So to speak to the, it's going to be the same sort of situation that we had at the elementary school and we brought to you a few weeks ago, where we weren't able to fill those three paraprofessional positions. So we said, okay, let's capitalize off of this and let's get teachers in front of kids and see if we can go to a model that works a little better. It's that same concept, where we would be looking at reducing the amount of paraprofessionals to get teachers in front of the kids and start more with that co-teaching model. We would have to be mindful that, you know, obviously, to bring up your point from last week or two weeks ago, we still need a certain amount of paraprofessionals, obviously, because there's so many classes, there's so many sections, there's so many kids, you have to meet the needs. But, you know, we've worked that out. We've worked a lot of the numbers out, and it's certainly doable. Do you have anything further?
I just want to tie, I only see one of the special education teachers on the table, I guess.
Right. One is, one is already in the operating budget, and then we would offset this one teacher with the paraprofessional staff. But it is a transition into two teachers, but...
You're right on it. I know. I have a lot there. About five years ago, our preschool staff consisted of one full-time teacher and one half-time teacher. And we surveyed parents, and then the following year, we found out that parents are looking for full day, especially for the four-year-olds. We don't offer it for the three-year-olds. So our preschool, we've had a waiting list every year, all year long. We've just done a registration. We started it January 22nd. We have one class full up with no openings whatsoever. The other class is close to being full. So what we're trying to do is give those parents who want the full day a little bit more flexibility instead of saying there's one classroom. And we did that this year. We took a few into that other class, which has now a mix, some full, some half, and we made it work. But ideally, we'd like to say, okay, well, this teacher now has Monday, Wednesday, Friday full day, and the other two days might have a morning session and an afternoon. So we're looking to add a .5, five days a week in the morning, which would mean a paraprofessional, a teacher, and an ABA to accommodate some of those needs, because we are, we're just busting at the seam. Ideally, 15 would be a nice number. We're up to 18, and that's the max that we can take. So it looks like a regular kindergarten class. I mean, they go to lunch, they go down to the nap room, they walk in a line, and it's really helping them when they transition to kindergarten, because they already know the building. They are in charge. So that's why I'm looking for the .5. I didn't want to jump to a 1.0 right away, because we've kind of done it in baby steps, and I think that this would really help. The next would be the kindergarten.
Possibility of kindergarten, we're not based on numbers.
Possibility. Okay. So the story on the kindergarten, we go by the town census. So we're just getting ready for registration. Last year, for registration, we started with 63. Right now, at the end in kindergarten, we have 87. My census for this year is starting with 90.
Wow.
So that's my...
63 to 87 actual?
Yes, 87 actual. So we gained 24. So if I'm starting with 90, doesn't mean they're all coming, but I'm a little worried. So that's why I felt like, well, we better put that in there, and with that comes a para into that classroom. The .2 Spanish teacher, my thinking is, I've had a heck of a time with my .2 librarian. I've had a real revolving door this year trying to get someone. What happens is I hire someone and then I become a para full-time in the district, so I lose them. We've done an exploratory Spanish with a volunteer this year. That's going fairly well, but they only get 20 minutes every other week. So if I could find a .2 Spanish teacher that could cover that special, then I would not have a librarian. The special wouldn't be library, because the classroom teachers read to their kids all the time. They could be assigned a time that they could bring their class to the library to sign out any books and return books. So they'd still have access to it, it just wouldn't be a 50-minute special. The special would be Spanish.
So this would shift the existing .2 library to a .2 Spanish?
Yes.
This would actually not be an addition?
And it was, but it was a .2 library para.
A para to a teacher.
So now goes to a teacher. And then we still want to keep going with our coding and our programming and move forward with that.
Thank you.
All right. Mine's pretty simple, because we've done a lot in the past year, so there's not as much left to do with us. But really, we're continuing, we have a digital technology and STEM teacher. We're continuing to see the need, obviously, for the STEM and technology piece. And as kids, if we're going to have opportunities in middle school and high school earlier, we can start them the better, the more successful they're going to be, the more opportunities they're going to have. And so we're really looking at having someone that, this would be part of their specials rotation, where they would be teaching keyboarding, also digital citizenship, how to, you know, create a Word document and set it up right with a heading and all those kinds of things, how to indent and fonts and all that wonderful stuff. But then also being a support to the classroom teachers and going up and helping integrate technology into the everyday lessons. You know, they're doing a science lesson, how can we integrate technology into that? And just being a part, being a support for the teachers and for the students in the school. And so I think we have some neat things that are already happening, but it could be so much more if we had someone dedicated to really working with the teachers. I know Mr. Scott's up in classrooms all the time, helping troubleshoot and things, but he's also managing a lot of other things with the network and just the devices and all of that. And so this person would really be an instructional focus for the technology rather than the hardware approach, I guess.
I gave a preface before of our commitment, going back over the last two years, to reinvigorate a science, technology, engineering, and math support curriculum in the middle school. And again, we've done a lot this year at the middle school to do what we can in the absence of a formalized STEM curriculum or STEM teacher with field trips and after-school activities. I would like to... I would like to move to have a full-time related arts teacher, teaching five classes a day to all three grades throughout the year. I'm actually really interested in the E part of it, the engineering. I don't know how many people ever had shop, woodshop or industrial arts when they were in school. It was a great place to go when I was a kid, and I have a very large population at Douglas Middle School that would love to build something, would love to break something, would like to solve a problem through trial and error, work with their hands, express themselves through creation or destruction, which, and there's a lot of learning in that, the engineering part. And again, that person would also come with the ability to support the science and technology and the math part, but I really think there's a really unique opportunity at the middle school to have this engaging program and really tie everything together for us. So Mrs. Urquhart spoke about the academic support center, special education teacher, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time there, but just I have one ask this year, and I think that that would bring us to where we need to be, and I think we would be firing at all pistons at that point and continue to produce great results.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
All right, I'm a glutton. So I, yeah, I asked for a lot of stuff. So a few years ago, the health teacher at the high school retired, and Mr. Maines, to cover a budget shortfall, had to eliminate the position. And then he was able to kind of plug the hole that that left behind by having an art teacher teach some health and have the family consumer science teacher teach some health. And, am I right? Is that the right question?
No, no, she's seeing the word on there that she doesn't, that she's not happy about, I don't know why.
We'll figure it out.
We'll get there in a minute.
The.
You didn't have to say it like that, geez.
Oh, don't blame me on that one. I have nothing to do with that word.
But yes, so we go back to the fact that when Mr. Colabello retired four, five years ago, people from other departments were covering Mr. Colabello's classes, hence we couldn't do Mass Core, because they weren't teaching those classes, they were teaching health.
Right, so I'd like to bring that position back to allow those, the art teacher, the family consumer science teacher, to go back to teaching in their primary areas, and also to have somebody who kind of owns the health curriculum. There's nobody in the high school who, I mean, they're all doing a great job with it, but there's nobody who sits at home in August thinking about great new curriculum and assessments and activities they can do with the health curriculum. Just nobody has that passion and ownership of it, and I'd like to bring that back. Ms. Urquhart spoke about the special education teachers, and I'm going to totally skip that one, so that Ms. Keegan doesn't get mad. Full-time science teachers, so there's a lot of things that we could do by adding a new science teacher, and that includes, you know, if you look at the list, forensics is offered. All these schools that offer criminal justice, they offer both a criminal law and a forensics course. Well, the forensics course is usually a lab science. That person could offer biotechnology. That person could offer pre-veterinary or zoology or horticulture, botany, or, you know, it creates more sections to offer these programs that would be pretty unique. You know, if we can add that plant science program, we could start a community garden and stuff like that, these great programs that other schools are able to bring in, and kind of compete with the way those programs are running in other schools. I want to establish the plant animal science programs, it's the community garden, and maybe, what did you say, an atrium would be the indoor greenhouse?
Indoor greenhouse, still a little atrium type of thing.
I was saying arboretum, but I think that's, I was wrong.
We can do an arboretum if you want, if we can just get a couple hundred acres to go start planting, we could do an arboretum.
We got it. To add the new courses in criminal justice, criminal justice is, you know, as you can see on that sheet, Sutton has it too, that says that seven out of eight local school districts offer criminal justice and forensics, and, you know, that's easily the most popular course that we are looking to offer. We did an assembly to talk about potential electives for next year, and when we said criminal justice, kids actually listened, and it was pretty exciting. Along with biotechnology, we have a lot of kids who are interested in pursuing careers in either veterinary or medical areas.
Which, I'm sorry to jump in, we did have biotech, as you remember, with Mr. Goss was here for a number of years.
Yep, so we'd really be looking to bring that back.
It sort of waned in interest, but we also, partly because we brought anatomy and physiology in instead of the biotech, and so, again, it looks like there's an interest in that as well.
We want to add more pathways. Once we get these first three pathways established, we'd like to look to offer more. We need to make sure that we can offer the coursework that the kids need for those. Introduce some early college partnerships. There's a few schools in the area that do early college. Essentially, kids earn, students would earn high school credits and college credits at the same time through articulations with colleges. So we have an agreement basically with QCC to do a couple of courses, and then I just today got information in from Bentley to do some, if we were going to add some pre-vet and to make articulations for our anatomy and physiology programs.
Bentley Becker.
Oh, what did I say?
You said Bentley.
Bentley would be business, and I'm working on them too, but, yeah, Becker, I'm sorry. And the costs, you know, there are some costs, but they're pretty minimal.
Really not a lot of money.
Yeah, 300 bucks for books.
But they are an add, so we wanted to put it in there for you.
And then.
Trainer.
An athletic trainer. So we're about the only school that doesn't have an athletic trainer at games, and, you know, it's a little embarrassing when, you know, I covered for Mary Sokol last week at the basketball game, and a kid from Hope Dale broke his nose, and I'm the one treating him, and, you know.
And they asked if we have any ice.
They asked if we had ice, and I'm like cracking ice cube trays from the cafeteria, and, you know, the dad asked me, like, what's your job here? And I'm actually the principal, because we don't have a trainer, and so we really, and that's something that the MIA is really looking, that you have that, and you're kind of messing with, you know, kid gets badly hurt.
We were looking at a per diem for home games to have somebody here.
Yeah, my medical training is, you know, gunshot wounds and rub dirt in it, you know, and that's not going to get us too far, so. But it's about making us competitive again, you know, you look over that sheet and what other schools have, and we need to be able to kind of catch up or keep up.
Keep up, right. Thank you, Mr. Romano.
Thank you.
And I believe that that is everything, that Ms. Keegan might have some details for you as well, but again, those were all adds, additional needs, based on what is a preliminary level service budget, if that's appropriate to say. Maybe share with them a little bit about.
So you have, in your packet, I did provide the FY 2020 superintendent's proposed preliminary budget. And, let's get to the last page, I guess, just to start with. The amount that we approved for in FY 19 was $13,323,500. We've applied overall, and I'll go into that in a little bit. So our preliminary proposed budget is $60,710,46. We've applied $2,684,385 in school choice, circuit breaker, middle school and high school athletics, the preschool revolving, three grants, and small donations. And so our preliminary proposed budget net of offsets at this time, we know this is very We were asked by the, we were informed from the town that there would be one of two scenarios, either a 2% increase from FY 2019 approved budget. So we, in order to meet that number, we would have to reduce this particular budget by $435,691, and if it was 1%, the other scenario, we would need to reduce this budget by $568,926. So as Mr. Maines did indicate, this is primarily a level service budget. There are a couple of things that we did add in here, that we do have Chromebooks for the middle school for $40,000, and we do have 20, I believe it's $28,000 for glycol for the high school.
What is glycol?
Thank you for asking.
Well, it's, oh boy, I'm not going to, it's like a, it's a fluid that keeps the system running, the HVAC and the heating. And we actually were going to try to do it this year, and we didn't do it because we were informed by our HVAC contractors that it would probably not be a good idea, because you might have a situation, and we certainly wouldn't want any other flood happening or anything at the high school.
Well, enough situations.
We'll wait for the warm weather and do it at an appropriate time, like in the summer when everybody's gone, and, but it definitely needs to be done. Hasn't been done for many years, it absolutely, absolutely must be done. So those are the two things that we have in here. So basically, carry forward staff from FY 19, including those approved by the school committee throughout the year, and all your typical budget items for instructional supplies, textbooks, and things of that nature. And then they just went over, we did apply a different sheet for you for the proposed additional needs. They just went over that. I do also have in your packet, we can go over the use of the revolving funds, particularly school choice and circuit breaker. Those are the largest ones that we have. And I can attest to the fact that I struggled a lot with this. When I saw, after preparing the budget, I don't know, I was remaining hopeful, and I was really hoping that the figure wouldn't be that much of a difference, but I kind of knew in the back of my head that it would be, but, that being said. So if you look at the one that, the top page is entitled, School Choice Revolving Fund. So I have for you the FY 19 projection. And keep in mind that with regard to school choice, the projection for FY 19 does not include any amounts that we may add to it after we close the books. Typically, we do have an add to the school choice, because we bring general fund down to zero, and I reclassify expenditures that are currently in FY 19 in school choice to the general fund to bring it to zero, thereby increasing the school choice balance. But I cannot give an amount at this time what that would be. I know in years, many years past, when things were a little bit different, previously, they used to ask the principals at a certain time to not spend any more funds and kind of, you know, stop at a certain time so you can do, I just am not an advocate of that for a number of reasons. I feel that, I just know what they go through through the year. Things can happen any day, they do happen every day, actually, and they need to be able to get what they need, what they need to get. That's what they budget for, they need to have that flexibility, they deserve that flexibility. And also, I feel particularly even more stronger about the fact that the more that you reduce budgets and you keep cutting and cutting and cutting, the less flexibility they have to begin with. So that even makes the argument more that I really feel they need through June 30th to do, do what they need to do. So that being said, I do have the projections here, and the carry forward at this time for FY 20 for beginning fund balance of $1,030,000. I have receipts in there, being brutally conservative, $750,000. I have incorporated in the budget for planned expenditures, $1,146,000, leaving an estimated FY 2020 fund balance of $634,000, without any add from closing out the year. So that's where we are with that particular account. On the next page is circuit breaker, and I have, as you can see in FY 19, that the revenues is what DESE, they've already calculated what we will receive, $1,367,571. We budgeted in FY 19, when you approved the budget, $1,511,312. We have added additionally, additional use in FY 19 of circuit breaker of $212,040, leaving an estimated fund balance going into FY 20, $739,947. My estimated circuit breaker receipts I have at, oh, I changed the wrong, yeah, I only put the, okay, did I do something there?
Something's off here.
Yeah, yeah, because I changed one number and not the other. Hold on one second, before I, I just want to make sure I double-check, at least if the, I can change the typo after, but, 954. And then, oh, darn, it's hard to do that on here. Hold on one second. Seven, okay, plus 954 equals, and then, oh, Jesus. I want to make sure it didn't add those two in, so that's what I want to make sure. Equals, and then, oh, no, it didn't. Okay, we're fine. Yep, okay. So we have, I'm estimating $954,000 in receipts. That's a little bit lower. I know yesterday there was a meeting at Mass Y, wasn't not able to attend. Jay Sullivan was there from DESE, and he's recommended, recommending 68 to 70% to budget for FY 20 for circuit breaker. I don't know if you all saw on the news, but they're estimating far lower state receipts right now at this time compared to last, the same time last year. So again, we're being, you know, brutally conservative there, and so that would leave incorporating $954,000 in the budget, $739,947. And as you know, we kind of put that little contingency aside as well, because we never know what's going to happen, but, so we have increased the use overall of revolving funds, but I did not put in a number that I can't sleep at night. We are ratcheting it up. And the amounts we have, just very quickly, for preschool revolving, $108,143, donation from Goll, $3,300, and we look at everything, we look at donations and everything we can. Middle school athletics, $17,850, high school athletics, $63,000, unless, of course, we vote to increase the fee. I'm leaving it, you know, where it is right now at this juncture. And the district-wide music programs, $1,850. We have the SPED grant estimated at $275,000 incorporated in the budget. Title I estimated at $106,242. Early childhood SPED grant, $9,000, for again, the total of $2,684,385. Certainly adjustments can be made to this, this is preliminary. There's another point that I wanted to make, I can't think of right now. Okay. I did provide for you also a document that I thought would be very helpful. This is this one here called Budget Impacts Detail. So basically, what it's showing you is the impact for the FY 20 budget. At the top section, it's the amounts from the DTA contract, steps and COLA, administrative, para, the $1 increase for the paraprofessionals, the paras, ABA, secretarial, and others, steps and COLAs, custodians, their COLA, coming to a budget impact of $341,691. I also included what's incorporated in the FY 20 budget, but delineated in detail for you, everything that was approved during this year that's incorporated in there, most of it is staff. You can see that all listed there. And then I did mention earlier, some of the items, the larger items beyond the level service, is the glycol for the high school, $23,000, and the 380 Chromebooks for the middle school for $40,000. So that does really kind of identify all of the differences, you know, by and large, because the difference between the superintendent's preliminary proposed and the FY 19 budget appropriation, $702,161. I've identified $660,313 of that, as far as the large items and the new positions added. And, you know, the 41, 48 differences, of course, are increases for electricity and telephone and fuel and a million other things throughout the budget, so. So that's where we are at this juncture, with, certainly with work remaining to be done, but that's just a preliminary proposed budget.
So there's obviously a lot of work that will need to be done and a lot of decisions that will need to be made, and we look forward to the opportunity to present to other boards along the way, as we always have, and to have our open session coming up soon and get to a final budget.
So this document will be going to the town, or we'll be doing work on it before it goes to the town?
Oh, no, we'll need to send the document, I believe, tomorrow. We can buy, and, you know, Kevin can certainly send an email, like, we can attach the document and with an explanation of the process.
So.
If that's okay with you, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So I, a couple of comments. So thank you all for your work. We appreciate everything that goes into all of this. We know it's not easy, but I, you know, I do have some concerns with, you know, where we're at, and, you know, I asked Courtney to bring this document with the kind of budget impact detail, just to help us discuss that a little bit. Not concerned with anything that's included in here, I think it's all valid stuff. We, you know, we've approved all these adds here. The idea of this being level service, I think we ought to find a better way to kind of couch that when we talk to the town, because it's leveled to the service that we currently have now, but we know that we've been able to increase our service throughout the year here. So I think when they look at this and say, wow, you're going up 5.27% on a level service budget, that they're looking at where we were this time last year, and it's not really level service where we were this time last year, so.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
Not really going up that much, you know, relative to where we were this time last year. A lot of it is an increase of service in their eyes.
That's a good point.
They necessarily don't know about.
Right, exactly. That's the way they would see it.
It's a considerable increase in service, the things you guys talked about, things we've added, you know, the gains that we've seen from that. So I don't want to lose that, and I don't want the town to lose that, that, you know, it's, you know, we're not increasing by 5.2% on exactly what we had this time last year. It's much different story than that. So when I look at kind of according sheet, and actually, I'll even take the para piece, the increase that we had this year out of the top portion of the sheet and bring it down, it's really, you know, 282,000 roughly that we're increasing. down, it's really, you know, 282,000 roughly that we're increasing just for steps and COLAs and stuff like that, which would almost fit into the 2 percent, you know. So if we made no additions this year, not, you know, did nothing, approved nothing this year that you guys came through, 2 percent would almost get us there. But, you know, we've got to account for the fact that we did all this other stuff this year, which is, again, I've called this the shoring of the foundation. You know, we'd gone to a point where, you know, we had cracks in our foundation and the house wasn't going to sustain that much longer and we had to do this. But there's not only a cost to this, there's an opportunity cost to this. By spending the money on these things, it reduces the opportunity to spend money on other things that are beyond just fixing the foundation. So, you know, it's tough to say that because I look at all the things that you guys want to do and just, we're not going to be able to do much of that, you know, what's here. And, you know, I think we're going to have to find some ways to figure out how to pull some things out of here so we can try to do some of those things. Because right now, I don't think we can do any of those things without self-funding them somehow. So, just the reality of it. So I just want to kind of get my thoughts out there, just let everybody know where I kind of stand on this. Again, I appreciate your work. You guys doing this too. I know you've sharpened your pencil on these things, but, you know, this is a tough story to tell to the town. We have to make sure we do a good job when we do tell that around why, you know, we're coming back looking for another 5.2 percent.
I think another piece is to be bringing to them, you know, the data points of, you know, we've done this.
Yeah.
And so we've seen a major increase in what you had mentioned, you know, with the kids at the middle school adding those things. Now, this is what we're seeing is, you know, performance-wise.
And we did, this is important, we were able to launch that centralized benchmark through a third-party company that is normed against the MCAS. Our benchmarks are done. We have a tremendous amount of data. We're pouring through it. We're very, very pleased where we are. Again, it's part of a continuum of improvement. And Mr. Argyle, I don't know if it's fair to ask, has anyone, I know it's only been kind of a short time within a little over a year, but is the community reflecting back that they're seeing improvements in the school, that they're...
Yeah, you know, I was going to ask you guys that question because I, you know, we don't hear from the community a lot. It's unfortunate, you know. It's just, as long as I've been in town, that's just been the way. You see who shows up to our meetings. It's not a lot of people. Now, I'm not hearing a lot of complaints, but I wasn't hearing a lot of complaints last year either. I don't know if you guys are hearing fewer complaints. You know, so I was going to ask you guys all, you know, do you guys feel like the, we're seeing the difference in the culture of our schools with these additions? And how do you quantify that?
Right.
For people who are layman to education, I guess. And that's really what we're talking about. We're talking about our board of selectmen and basically our constituents in the community. It's just, you know, we sit here and listen to you guys and we can see the importance of the things that we've done here. How do we get that across to everybody else?
Josh, even just what you gave us too, what the other schools are doing.
Marketing is...
That is, that's huge.
You saw, I mean, and at that point, I was sitting on that side, but when we got the big crowds was when athletics was being cut. And a lot of people said that's going to destroy the culture of our school. So, great, it's back. You know, you get it back for a year or two, people kind of forget that it was going to go away.
Yeah.
But, and I think the marketing is key. Because there's a lot good going on here.
Yeah.
It really is.
A teacher made a great recommendation to me yesterday, Mr. Bell, that I wanted to, this is a forum, but even to sell within our own schools, that she said, you need to get down to the fifth grade in the spring and invite the parents of fifth graders to the middle school and show them what they're doing and show them the future and show them what we're great at now and what they can expect their kids to become there and get the parents excited, invite the parents in. And I said, that's a great, great idea. And in another life, I was a private school principal. We lived and died by inviting people in, open houses, tours, interviews, all, and you knew every parent by their first name because you knew them coming in. And I think that might get, just get, we're doing great stuff. Do they know we're doing great stuff? We report to you and we're on the internet, but what are we doing to let our constituents know? I'm very proud of, to be part of this team and what we've done in a short amount of time. And it's, I think we've been great stewards of the, the capital has been invested in us, but we can be in an echo chamber, but, you know, I'm willing to do whatever to get it out there.
I think we could have a whole nother meeting in probably a month around PR for our district. I think we should put that on our agenda for the spring meeting. Mr. Mainz has already kind of started talking about that a bit in, you know, recent days and months here. But going back to your point about athletics and even the music program, you know, the community, I think that those types of things are easy for the community to grasp onto, relate to. So when they go away, when they come back, people can get excited about that. Stuff like adjustment counselors and special ed teachers, it's hard for the community as a whole to grasp the impact of those things and the need for those things. So it's just important, you know, it's going to be very important for us to have a well-crafted, I don't know why I say story because I don't want to make an impression that's made up, but, you know, telling why, how those important, how those impact our school, why it's, you know. You know, and to me, it feels like, you know, there was a cloud over our district, you know, a couple of years ago. And all these things that we're doing have kind of lifted that crown and brightened our hallways and, you know, I'm saying that very kind of, kind of non-literally, but it almost feels that way, you know?
Oh, no.
Choice numbers have changed. The number of people on BBT has changed.
Yeah.
We said that that was going to cost money. We never, we never hid behind anything. We said that if you want us to be competitive, that there is going to be an impact in that. And Josh's example of that paper with all the schools that have these different programs, we can get to that number, get rid of all, any of those programs and we know what's going to happen. Is kids are going to choice to, experts are going to choice to whatever.
And that kind of gets me back to maybe my final point is that, you know, I think when we did our roadshow last year, Mr. Mainz, you did such a good job presenting, you know, moving the district forward plan, the things that folks got excited for, at least from a boardroom selectman and a finance committee, were the things that we haven't done yet, you know, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to do now. We've done a lot of others. Those weren't the things that got them excited though.
Right.
They weren't excited about adjustment counselors and stuff like that.
Right.
We know the importance of them.
Right.
They don't necessarily, so we're going to make that connection. You know what I mean?
And you're making a solid point. When you're not in it, you don't know it.
Yeah.
Right.
You really don't. So how do you get that point across?
I mean, we'll do the same thing we did last year and we started tonight and we'll...
So I guess my biggest worry is they're going to say, you know, you guys have added nine positions, you know, since we talked to you last year. There's no playing animal science program, there's no robotics, there's no STEM, there's no, all these things that we were excited about moving you guys forward haven't been done, you know. So that's my biggest fear, you know?
Here's what I would say to that, was that we had, all of those things were on the list.
Yeah.
But we only added what we thought was the first iteration, the highest priority items that we had, with the understanding that we were going to try to build again a second year of it and then there would be minimal on a third year of it, which was the adds. Now, that being said, this is not like an ongoing thing every year for the next 10 years. We're going to add positions. But I think what the district has to keep in mind, the town has to keep in mind, is how many positions were cut? Some of us who were in the room remember, cut this, cut this, cut this, cut this. There were, I don't remember, it was in the 20s somewhere in that ballpark, and all we've brought back so far is some of those were mandates, but the others were a couple of adjustment counselors, moving people from .5 to 1.03 people. That's a one and a half. That's three and a half positions that we added. Now, things have happened in the meantime where we've had to add a special education teacher or a special education teacher there. Those were unanticipated. You couldn't have, you couldn't have expected that. So technically, we really didn't add a lot of, a lot of things. We added some mandates, but, and some things. But all of that was part of the whole process when we, if you were sitting right next to me...
They were all there, yeah. Again, but you know, you know as well as I do, the piece that they latched on to are the things that we haven't acted on yet. And they're going to say, you know, you guys, again, and, you know, we get it, and I just want us to be ready, ready for some hard questions from them. And I don't, I don't want us to be frustrated with those questions either, because I think they're legitimate from their eyes. I guess, again, from layman's, non-education, non-school committee folks are going to be like, what's going on? Like, why, why haven't we moved further with this thing based on how much money you've already spent on this? So, and then just, I guess, the other thing is, I feel really good about the things that we've done. I think if we can do nothing else from this point, I think we've already improved our competitiveness to a certain extent. I'd like to see it go further.
Right.
But we've done the right thing by this district. Again, I think the cloud has been lifted to a certain extent. You can't just sit still, but we've done some really good things and I expect, you know, we're starting to see some results. I expect that it would continue just based on what we have done, so.
I would also say, Brett, that we've done, we've done right for the district, but we've also done right for the town, but more importantly, we've done right for the students and for their families.
Yeah.
Because those adjustment counselors are invaluable at this point in time, given what's going on in our classrooms and our buildings.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just say, can I just say a few things on, so back to your question a few minutes ago about the difference. And I feel myself, there's been a huge difference, huge difference. Back to your point, Kelly. I mean, it wasn't just the athletics, but just they were feeling like we were losing ground, losing everything, ready to shut the doors. We've come, we've brought a lot of stability. We have added and we are adding some competitiveness. But in conjunction with that, we do have the mandates, you know, that we do have to deal with and we need to find a way of getting that understood. But in addition to that, academically, which is, that's what we're here for, the academics for our students and providing a good holistic program, which includes music and athletics, the model that Mrs. Urquhart is moving to with regard to the special ed teachers is actually a nationwide model and it has been shown to be improving academic performance for all students by going to that model. So it isn't just adding special education, you know, teachers or whatever just because of mandates. It is moving towards a better academic model, which has been proven nationwide. So again, I feel that's, I know it's special education, but it's still, it is part of that competitiveness. We're here for with regard to academic performance.
Yeah, and to jump off of that, you know, I think a part of that understanding for people is going to have to be, and I think we're just this year, everybody's starting to understand it. When I say the words, or when the other administrators say the words, special education teachers are not just for special education students. Now, yeah, when you're talking about mandates, when you're talking about IEPs, of course. When you're talking about a different model, when you're talking about moving to a co-teaching model, that's for everybody. And that's taking your district to a place that, quite honestly, we've actually fallen a little behind on, you know. And I think that we are, we're very advanced in the area of special education, but I think the combination of, you know, using co-teaching and using your general ed and special ed teachers together is something that we can do a lot better with. And I think that's going to be a big part of maybe next, you know, next time we meet or whatnot, there is a ton of data around that, you know, and there's a ton of examples just from what we've done this year, you know, as to how we've improved things. So, very, very good point.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think you're disagreeing with any of this at all.
No, no.
I think it's a proactive conversation.
How we get it across.
How do you get everybody to...
Exactly.
It's been a journey for us to understand it. Being here twice a month, listening to you guys about this stuff, so picture mom and dad sitting at home, that the only time they hear about this is at annual town meeting, you know, like, what is going on with this school? You know, that's, I'm trying to get in front of that reaction from folks in the community. That's all I'm really trying to do.
Absolutely.
So, not questioning anything really that we've done.
Oh, no.
Other than, you know, again, for us as a school committee, just, you know, it's important for us to note, you know, the things that we've added, again, the opportunity cost of that. I think this year, that prevents us from adding other things in the future is to make sure everything we add, it's not just, okay, we can afford it this year, well, now it comes back to next year, you're paying for it again next year. And that might mean that you're not going to add something else next year now. So it's just, for us, always keep that in mind.
And that was an excellent point you made about the level service as well. Because, you know, from our perspective is one thing, but now that's a good, I mean, you know...
Yeah, that comes from my five committee perspectives. I think I was always trying to, you know, figure that out. I'm like, this is level service, but how did it go? You know, it's just, again, just how we catch that conversation.
So that was a good point.
It's level service from right now, but it's not level for ever from the last time we talked to them, though.
Right. Well, exactly. And looking at it precisely from the way they're looking at it, starting from the FY '19, 13 million, no, that exact number, you're absolutely correct. So we've got to find it, yeah.
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 All right.
It wouldn't be budget season if we weren't having these conversations, I suppose. And I think it's important, though, to your point, from the district standpoint, is that we need to prove to the community that we are good stewards of the dollars that they're providing us and that, I think it's also important to remember how far down the well we went. And there's a long way to go to get back up to the top of the well.
Yeah.
But again, with the focus on academics, programs, course opportunities, internship experiences, all those things that others are doing to provide those for our kids in Douglas as well.
And before we leave, do you mind if I ask you at this juncture, do any of you feel uncomfortable or would you like, you know, or is it too early for me to ask you about the, particularly the school choice and Circuit Breaker, but more the school choice about, do you have any feelings at this moment about...
I think you did the right thing.
Seems okay right now.
Well, I was hoping I was going to come in tonight and find that you had only budgeted 750 of school choice and that we had an opportunity to increase that to offset this thing, but I was actually a little disheartened to say, oh, wow, we're already at 1.1 million of school choice.
Right.
And we're still have this big of a gap.
So you can understand the struggle I had sitting at the desk with you.
Yeah, no.
That's why I'm asking you.
I'm comfortable where you are.
Okay.
I'm just trying to know that we don't have as much room to work with that. So I think unfortunately, the work to get us back into even a 2 percent is going to have to come with us pulling something out, you know, somehow, working things somehow.
Or working with, and I'm actually waiting for, actually, I called you earlier about this, Neil, but I didn't have a chance to speak to you about it, but I did call DESE about something regarding Circuit Breaker that I thought I was 99.9 percent correct about. And actually, the whole MasWY listener, most people out there think that is correct, but whether or not we can for tuitions that we have paid for from the 240 grant, whether or not we can actually file for reimbursement. And Jay Sullivan from DESE said, and also, I'm trying to think of her name, from Evelyn? But I said, we're not doing anything until I get it in writing. I know better. I have to have it written from DESE. I said, I didn't, we didn't want to tell you that and have you put it in your file. And I said, I don't want to have them do that and then have an auditor coming at us afterwards, but, so that will be good. That'll, that'll change it a little bit too, and maybe we can increase it a little bit as well. But again, that's something, that's a discussion that as long as we're all comfortable with it, we can take a look at both of those accounts and see if we can utilize them a little bit more.
Okay. Anything else?
What?
Topics unanticipated, I don't have any. And all you have is adjourn.
I have one. What's this, sir?
Nothing.
Sorry, we're, I'm almost done.
Whatever.
I know I talk too much. Okay, so, follow me. If you remember, I'm going to say it was October, I came forward requesting different positions for kiddos that had moved into the district. We had a student that moved in at the elementary school. You're going to have to follow this closely, okay? Student moved in at the elementary school. We recognized the student required a one-to-one. You approved that, but we did not post the position, okay? Because shortly thereafter, we had another student within the same program have to go out for an extended evaluation. That student has now been placed in out-of-district placement, okay? So the one-to-one that was working with the student that is placed in the one, in the out-of-district placement, that one-to-one will go with the student that moved into the district. So we will not be filling that position. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
That helps.
It does help.
Well, I guess that helps that part. Doesn't help on the out-of-district. But, yeah. Okay. All right. If that is all, I will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Jillian at 9:08. Did I hear a second?
Second. Brown, what is it?
Lisa, thank you. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned.